Ten, twenty nineteen. The team placed fifth out of thirty-two teams in game day UCA Nationals and fourteenth out of fifty teams in small varsity non-tumbling. And whereas February tenth, twenty nineteen, the team participated in the World High School Championships, which is by invitation only, and placed third, competing with teams from Jamaica and Canada. And whereas the team exhibited a great deal of pride representing Newberry High School, as well as the city of Newberry, at school events symbolizing the spirit of their high school and city. And whereas these ladies and gentlemen dedicated hundreds of hours in practice to promote and build on the spirit of excellence. Now, therefore, I, Jordan Marlowe, Mayor of the City of Newberry, do hereby congratulate the city, the Newberry High School competitive cheer team and their coaches for their outstanding appearances at the state, national, and world level. All the citizens of Newberry are very proud of this exceptional accomplishment and join together in celebrating their success. And witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and caused the seal of the city of Newberry to be affixed on this twenty-fifth day of February two thousand and nineteen. Congratulations, Newberry High School Cheer.
We have a copy, we have a plaque, uh, as a presentation, but, uh, our city clerk duty will actually have a copy of this information for all of the cheerleaders.
If you want, I think the best photo is to see with everybody.
That's right. If I could have all the cheerleaders come up here, please? You guys know how to take a picture, so.
We'll have plenty of time to do as many pictures as you guys want. You don't have the shot if you want, just wait a second.
Work out.
Send them one heel.
Smile.
I don't know how to look.
Legs are shaking.
Alright, are you done?
Oh, oh, oh.
Alright, smile break.
There's such thing as a smile break in here.
Okay.
This is a big deal, we got mine.
Alright.
Are we getting paper?
Thank you.
You want us to stay or you want us to go?
You are one of the cheerleaders to watch the field of government concern if you want. Layers are going, or I'm sure you have anything better to do.
We'll just take a, a quick break if you are not wanting to stay around. So the two people that'll be left.
What are you talking about?
It's marshmallow.
It's marshmallow.
Good job, ladies.
Have a good night, everyone.
Take out the children.
Take them back today.
Uh, if you're joining us a little bit late, we're just having a presentation with the high school cheerleaders, so they're just kind of filing out. We are picking up in presentation, uh, which is now be Business Spotlight with Inspired Energy. Uh, Brian, take it away.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, Inspired Energy is a locally owned, privately owned manufacturer of smart rechargeable batteries for original equipment manufacturers worldwide. Uh, they build both standard and customized battery applications, uh, battery packs for all kinds of industries and they ship all over the world from their only location, which is right here in the city of Newberry. We're very proud to have them here. Yes. Um, uh, they're sought after for their quality, customizability, industry knowledge, and world-class service. They remain the only company to design, build, and ship all of their, uh, smart battery products from their own factory in the United States. Uh, they don't send any production offshore for assembly because they believe in maintaining full control of, uh, all of the manufacturing process and quality. And so, uh, we're very glad that they do that right here from Newberry. Uh, representing Inspired Energy tonight is Simone Bagley, the Human Resources Generalist.
Hello.
Hello, Ms. Bagley.
How are you guys today?
Great.
Much smaller audience, I was worried for a second.
Thank you for being here.
Um, so yeah, good, a good announcer introduction there. Um, yeah, we manufacture lithium ion smart battery packs. They're about this big, give or take, um, all handheld. Uh, we started out as part of Energizer, um, the big plant on four forty-one. It's now got the Phoenix sign, yeah. So, um, our four owners were originally in a little subdivision in there, um, and, uh, if you want to go to the next slide. Do I? Oh, thank you. Perfect, okay. So, um, they, they started out in there, building these little smart battery packs. They would do one or two. They were initially looking at laptops, um, and then after they did a few world tours, they realized that every two years Dell wants a new kind of battery pack and they want four million of them, and then they're done with them again. So, so we started doing, okay, what if we just make a product and then people find us? Um, so we ended up working through that and getting to the point where we build a lot of custom packs based on these, it's like Lego building blocks. So we have battery cells, which are about the size of your finger, um, and we have, we build circuit boards. So we take a, the cells, different, um, if you line them up differently, you get different voltage output based on the way you lay them in series, um, and then we pair that with a circuit board, uh, with smart electronic components on it and assemble a pack that has the power output and, um, and smart battery components that our customers want. So from that, a customer can call up and say, I want this many volts and I want it to weigh this much and be about this big, and we say that's impossible, or, okay, yeah, if we shift this a little bit, we can build it for you. So with that kind of standard way of doing things, we've been able to build, uh, a lot of products from it out of that same base. And because it's all custom, all of it's, uh, small numbers, we're not making a million at a time, we're making two hundred, um, we can do that in the States because you can't, it's not economical to have a machine learn how to do it, you need a person to do it because it changes every fifteen minutes or two hours. So we've been able to keep all the manufacturing here right in Newberry. We just had our quarter of a billion dollar celebration in January, so we flew in lobsters from Maine. Um, bit of a, a task, but, um, and we got a big party outside and, and fed all the employees and invited spouses and all that. So, um, so we're still dedicated to keeping everything in the city, um, and, uh, and actively hiring all the time for, for operators, for the factory work in the States, and then also engineers and HR, finance, all that kind of thing. So, um, so I kind of went through what the smart battery is. Um, so in two thousand and two when we started, um, started out with thirteen employees and eight products. We have a hundred and thirty now and about five hundred products. Um, there's hundreds, if hundreds after that, if you get into all the custom ones we've made, um, but in general, we've got about five hundred. So people, people call up and say, I'd like one of these I saw on your website, and we can, we can build some of those. Everything's built to order, we don't have a big stockpile sitting there. Um, yeah, we've continued to, we've been able to insource more and more of our suppliers. Um, so we're starting to move things to Georgia when we can. We now have more money in the bank to be able to do that. When we first started, we had to get more imported from China because it's cheaper, and now we're able to work with suppliers and we have enough, we can create enough demand for them that they can actually build up their lines, and, and so we've been able to bring a lot back to the States, which is excellent. And it usually costs a little more, but then in the reliability, um, us being able to literally drive up to Georgia if we're short on something for a customer saves us time too, so it works out. Um, we sell all over the world, um, ninety-six countries was the last one we had when we, we kind of looked at it, but it goes up pretty often, um, and five special economic zones, so they usually get tax breaks because they're building in a very small area and, and building a lot. Um, so we sell pretty much all over the world. We're having a tough time getting into Africa, there just aren't as many high-tech devices that need our batteries. Um, but we do a lot with defense and military, um, so that ends up taking them all over the world too. So a lot of times we'll have a customer in, um, somewhere in Europe and they will sell to other customers around the world because we're, again, making the power sources for their machines. So if they have an oxygen concentrator that they build, we might build a power source for that oxygen concentrator, which then goes all over the world, so we haven't counted that. So if you do that, we'll have more countries. Um, plans for the future, so we've been in business for almost seventeen years and we don't foresee that slowing down anytime soon. Uh, we've ended up building an addition to our factory, we're in the commercial park at the back, um, and then we also bought the building across the street that used to belong to, there was an engineering firm, it's right next to the frat place. Gourmet, gourmet, yep. Um, so, so we've got the three buildings there and we're hoping to eventually expand what we call Building C, but next to the, the gourmet rodent, um, just for warehouse space most likely. Um, but we don't foresee leaving Newberry anytime soon, it's been really good for us. Um, we've got an amazing workforce, we've, again, been able to continue to invest in them, um, we, we make a point to make as much as it's possible in today's economy to make this a, a full-time career for, for our operators, so 401K, um, we do the parties and, um, we've had several employees retire who actually worked at Energizer back when it started, so that was, was pretty excellent recently. Um, we also have great customers, so we have a lot of customers who are medical, uh, military, science-based, and we don't have many customers calling to complain. So, a lot of times, again, they have a military contractor, they work for the, for government, um, and we end up getting to, to work with them and meeting a whole bunch of different people. Um, most of it's done online, we don't have many people actually coming through Newberry, um, but every now and then we do have audits and we'll take them out to Bellagio's. Um, we, we do offer high-quality products, uh, and again, that's part of the reason we can continue to manufacture in the States, people are willing to pay for, you know, NASA will not buy batteries from China, so they buy them from us. Um, and having humans who we pay well and take care of build them makes it, makes all the difference. So, um, we have very few returns and, and when we do, we've got a team of engineers who figure out what went wrong and, and usually it's something like tape or something nice and simple. Um, but we'll continue to, uh, maintain our expertise, we have, uh, we're regularly bringing on new engineers, sometimes from UF, sometimes from all over the, the country, um, and, uh, and just constantly working with the, uh, evolving international standards for the environment too. So sometimes we have kind of a freeze in the States where we'll go for a year without changing much, um, but then Europe will change its standards, so we've got to meet, make, meet that too. So, so we end up having to have a, a, almost universal acceptance for that, for all of our products. Um, we create zero hazardous waste, um, we're able to recycle all of our products, we do cardboard compressors, we have people come up and pick the cardboard up, um, we're, and we're committed to continuing that on a local scale and then also worldwide, making sure that we're not purchasing conflict minerals, um, or anything that, that's going to have a, a poor supply chain, so we're, we're dedicated to that as well. Any questions?
I'm excited for you.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you, Simone, appreciate it.
Alright, yep.
Our next presentation is going to be our, by our very own Amy, she is representing the Lions Club in a presentation on the elementary art exposition.
Which mayor and commission, if you see in front of you, we have some beautiful, those are the first place winners from each class, and then the one on this end was the best overall, so this was the one that was chosen by the judges, our judges are artists themselves, and so therefore it's very, very difficult to do. The one over here was our Lions Choice Award, so all of the Lions actually got to together and voted and chose. Of course, we had over two hundred and fifty art submissions this year, and all I'm going to do is read their, the names of the winners so that they get their names read out loud.
Alright.
From kindergarten, our grand prize winner, from kindergarten, our grand prize winner.
That was the one.
Repeat that, from kindergarten. They took all the first place winners and kindergarten showed the most artistic imprint. So that is Briar Boyd. Then first place was Grayson Earl. Second place was Andrew Rad Rodriguez Alia, and if any of you are listening, please forgive me for butchering your names. Third place was John Schaefer. And as you can see, kindergarten did flowers this year. So basically, the theme was the love of nature and art. So they, they each chose, the, the teacher actually uses, Ms. Ling uses the theme to pull it together, and she worked, the children worked on this probably about three months. Um, the, the art teacher only gets to see the students once every nine days, so it takes a while to complete a project. From first grade, first place was Matthew Lilico, second place was Mackenzie Kellum, and third place was Isabel Henson. And what first place did was they had, they, they drew hearts and it was, it was, um, using image and depth, and it was not a way, it wasn't supposed to be, um, consistent, it, it wasn't supposed to be mirror images, it was letting them use their, their imagination. Second grade, you actually learned to trace, and they used several different mediums to create the dimensions. So they're the ones that did the birds on the branches, and first place was Michaela Lee, second place was Tyra Brown, and third place was Lydia Hardy. Third grade, um, actually worked on the differences between warm and cool colors, and, um, they also got to learn how to mix and blend, so they also used different mediums, most of them used chalk or, or crayon, they also got to use glue, but, um, they did pandas, and if you could see those pandas up there on their branches, their branches almost looked three D, the way they did their blending, and they really did a great job. First place was Carlos Hernandez Ramos, second grade was Marley Price, and third grade was Isabel Smith. And I, yes, place. And I think I did, I said Isabel's name last time, Lydia Hardy is in the second grade. Now, our fourth grade did textures and layering, they used multiple mediums, and they actually did a koi, which, as you can see, even the Lions Choice, that, all the Lions were very drawn to these koi. Um, first place was Alira McCall, second place was Nita Wang, and third place was Amelia Jones. And then our Lions Choice, which was also out of fourth grade, was Amelia Libordor. So, as always, this event is a huge success, we had probably two hundred and fifty to three hundred people go through the Main Street Gallery during the, the ten days that it was, was posted. Um, we just want to thank the Lions Club because they host it, they provide a meet-and-greet for the, the students and their parents. Of course, our very own Main Street Firehouse Gallery, who takes the time to take down the other art, hang this art, leave it up for two weeks and make it a real show, they open their gallery so that the parents and children can come in, and we really appreciate that. Um, specifically Ms. Peggy Loy and Ms. Linda Lehrman.
A good student.
And they're, yes, they're good with staple guns. And then, of course, our art teacher at Newberry High School, at Newberry Elementary School, who, Ms. Susan Ling, who takes her time and works really hard with our students. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Amy. Uh, item now D, item D will be the Great American Cleanup, and I believe that is going to be our city manager.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, annually, the city of Newberry participates in the Great American Cleanup, which is part of, of a nationwide Keep America Beautiful. And, uh, we have brief presentation, um, our, uh, what we were planning to do this year is similar to other years, we're going to have a general, community-wide cleanup by providing, um, trash receptacles out at, um, out at our Public Works compound, we're going to have a drop-off for hazardous waste materials, we're going to do yard waste amnesty, that's always a big hit, uh, yard waste amnesty. If you have your backup material?
I've got a couple.
I think the weekend is April.
Let me read the dates.
April fifth and sixth.
Sure, well, the presentation's getting loaded up, uh, under the summary for this item in the backup, our litter entire roundup is going to be on the Friday and Saturday, uh, fifth and sixth of April, uh, all day from eight to five PM, and that'll be over at the Public Works Department, uh, adjacent to Lois Ford Park, uh, one twenty northwest, two sixtieth street. Uh, on the Saturday, all day, also at the Public Tour Compound, will be the Household Hazardous Waste Roundup, and then the, uh, following week, starting on Monday, we'll have yard debris amnesty from, uh, seven AM to five PM, uh, that'll run the week of eighth, of the eighth through the eleventh. So that'll be citywide, yard debris, uh, must be put out curbside, uh, try not to obstruct the roadway, of course, uh, by Sunday, uh, if pref, if possible, and then we're going to just kind of be going through the city to kind of collect it, beginning on Monday, the eighth, and just get to it as, as we possibly can. Mike, you have anything else you want to add?
Just final slot of our sponsors, it takes, um, funding to do this, uh, like anything else, and Waste Pro, our solid waste collect, uh, collection contractor, uh, provides the funding to help us with the advertising, they provide the roll-off dumpsters and most of the materials that are needed, um, to operate, um, this event.
Okay. And Waste Pro's been partnering with the city now for several years on this event, so it's a good opportunity to try to take, uh, advantage and not have to go all the way over to the Le, Le Vita Brown to dispose of some of that. So, uh, just, again, while Mike's taking his seat, uh, April fifth will be litter and tire roundup, the sixth will be litter and tower, tire roundup, the sixth will also be hazardous waste, both of those items are going to be at Public Works, Public Works across from Lois Ford Park, and then yard debris the following week, the eighth through the eleventh, try to have everything curbside by Sunday evening, and then we'll just kind of make our way through the city to pick that, uh, yard debris up. I missed, I didn't miss anything, right?
Yes.
Alright, fantastic. Uh, moving on to Roman numeral six, public announcements, quick announcements, the two-minute things that usually Marlon is here to do, seeing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda, there's four items listed there, uh, that have been published, is there someone who wants to make a motion for approval of the consent agenda? Commissioner Coleman?
Second.
And Commissioner Glanzer, is the second? Any discussion on the item? Hearing none from the dais, any from the public? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have unanimous, motion passes, approval of the consent agenda. Next item is public hearings and ordinances, uh, first one is first quarter budget review and amendment. Dallas, a yield the floor.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, city commissioners. As you know, at the end of each quarter...
And then we're going to just kind of be going through the city to kind of collect it, beginning on Monday, the 8th, and just get to it as, as we possibly can. Mike, you have anything else you want to add?
Just final slot of our sponsors. It takes funding to do this, like anything else. And Waste Pro, our solid waste collect, collection contractor, provides the funding to help us with the advertising. They provide the roll-off dumpsters and most of the materials that are needed to operate this event.
And Waste Pro's been partnering with the city now for several years on this event. So, it's a good opportunity to try to take advantage and not have to go all the way over to the Le, Le Vita Brown to dispose of some of that. So, just again, while Mike's taking his seat, April 5th will be litter and tire roundup. The 6th will be litter and tire, tire roundup. The 6th will also be hazardous waste. Both of those items are going to be at Public Works, Public Works across from Lois Ford Park. And then yard debris the following week, the 8th through the 11th. Try to have everything curbside by Sunday evening. And then we'll just kind of make our way through the city to pick that yard debris up. I missed, I didn't miss anything, right?
Yes.
All right. Fantastic. Moving on to Roman numeral six, public announcements, quick announcements, the two-minute things that usually Marlin is here to do. Seeing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda. There's four items listed there that have been published. Is there someone who wants to make a motion for approval of the consent agenda? Commissioner Coleman and Commissioner Glanzer, as a second. Any discussion on the item? Hearing none from the dais, any from the public? Seeing and hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed? The ayes have unanimous. Motion passes. Approval of the consent agenda. Next item is public hearings and ordinances. First one is first quarter budget review and amendment. Dallas, a yield the floor.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, city commissioners. As you know, at the end of each quarter, or a month and a half afterwards, city staff presents a budget review to you, just so the commission can use their oversight powers over the budget, as well as brings a budget amendment to you if one is needed. At the end of the first quarter, we are 25% through our budget. We are in our general fund. We are on track in our revenues. We're at 37% collected. Mostly has to do with your tax revenues. Adlorm taxes are due on November 1st. And so, we get a large portion of our adlorm taxes in December, as you can see in our local tax category being at 41%. And we tend to get another big bump in the springtime. But all the other categories are right on track where we'd expect them to be. This happened last time, haven't it? Looking at where your ta, your revenues come from, as always, the largest share of your revenue you've received so far this year is from local taxes. That's going to include your property taxes, communication service taxes, gas taxes, sales taxes of those, all those good things. Your second highest is your license permits and fees. That's going to include building permits as well as fire assessment. Our building permit revenue is a little below target where we anticipated. We budgeted high based on previous years. We anticipate that it'll pick up. But if not, we do have building department reserves from previous years that we, we could dip into if we have to. But building permits tend to come in big waves. And we do have a couple of new phases of construction beginning. So, we expect to see those building permits hit their targets. In your expenditures, most of your cost centers are right on track at that 25%. There's actually a, an error on this page. We're actually not at 31% of total expenditures. We're at 25.3% of total expenditures. Not a lot of in compliance, non-compliance in our, in our cost centers in the general fund. This is a, a new chart I added. This shows the, the blue line is how much they've spent. And the orange is what their budget is. So, you can see how much of the budget each of the cost centers in the general fund has spent. As you can see, most of them are right about a quarter, which is where we'd expect them to be.
Are those the default colors, Dallas?
I selected those especially for Commissioner Farnsworth. This showed you where the expenses went. But, you know, it's just kind of sort of colorful circle. In your smaller funds, your capital improvement, your Champions Park, debt service, and your sales surtax fund of Wild Spaces, they are all performing as, as expected. Not a lot of activity going on. It is, should be noted that in our debt service fund, we do have the purchase of a fire engine, fire tanker, fire engine coming down the line. The commission approved that in the budget. So, in a few months, we will be bringing you options for financing of that piece of equipment. In your electric fund, we are performing as anticipated. So far this year, the electric fund has, bless you, operating revenues over operating expenditures of about $13,000. If you take into account the capital assets and our investment into our infrastructure, we've put about $412,000 into our infrastructure so far this year in the electric fund. Total revenues over our under expenditures is about negative $400,000. So, that's $400,000 we're pulling out of our reserves to pay for capital expenditures. And we're going to pull that out of our depreciation and our previous year retained earnings. In your water and wastewater fund, as the commission knows, we, we needed a rate increase this year. That rate increase has, has been very helpful. As of the end of the first quarter, the waste, the water fund is at a loss of $306. That's good. And your wastewater fund has made a small, is at a loss of $1,500. So, those, we expect those to turn into profits later through the year. As you know, in the winter months, our water, wastewater consumption is at its lowest. As we get through the summer months, we'll see those revenues increase as we sell more water and wastewater. We don't sell wastewater, but you know what I mean. And then in our water, in our water department, we have invested $62,000 into our capital assets and infrastructure. In the wastewater department, we've invested $266,000 into the capital assets and infrastructure. Your smaller mosquito control fund and internal service funds are all performing as anticipated. And just so you know, your investments have earned $43,000 so far this year. In your long-term debt, the city only has two outstanding debts at the time, which is for water wastewater expansion. At the end of last year, we had about $2.6 million in debt. We anticipate that that'll be about 2.5 at the end of this year. We've made no payments, but we do have payments. We had a payment due in February and we have a payment due in March. The budget amendment that is before you tonight is administrative in a lot of aspects. We are increasing our revenues in the general fund by about $70,000. That's to recognize FEMA reimbursements from Hurricane Irma, you know, a year and a half ago. Started getting those checks, as well as to move forward the Firdap grant that we got in last year, moving into this year as we've completed the project this year. And then on the expense side, a few years ago, the city was awarded a Go Solar grant, which was to pay for online permitting processes. Our software company has finally had the ability to implement that. So, we're pulling forward those funds to implement the online building permit process. And that's what you see in the finance and administration department, as well as the building department. In your comprehensive planning, there's carrying forward some expenses from last year that didn't get paid. And you're bringing the money forward into this year to make those payments. And then we have the Firdap grant, which I mentioned earlier is a carry forward. Commission have any questions?
Does the commission have any questions? Commissioner Hersam, Hersam is at a, just a hand. Anybody else? Yes, sir.
I did forget to mention a rather large budget amendment. We're adding $700,000 into our special revenue funds for the CDBG grant that is on the agenda later tonight.
Okay.
Contingent upon you guys signing that contract.
Okay. Is there a procedural issue?
Mr. Mayor, pro temp, the next item is for me to read the title of the resolution and for motion, second and vote. So, I'll do that now. This is Resolution Number 2019-08. The Resolution of the City Commission of the City of Newberry, Florida, Adopting Amendments to the Fiscal Year 2018-2019 Budget, and Providing for Severability, Conflicts, and Effective Date. Appropriate motion is passed. Resolution Number 2019-08, as read by Title Only.
Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve Resolution 219-08.
And a second. Chair recognizes Commissioner Coleman as the motion maker and Commissioner Glanzer as a second. Mike, you're going to have to be a little faster. Any, any further discussion of the dais? Any from the public? Seeing and hearing none. All those in favor of the motion on the floor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. The ayes have unanimous. Motion passes. Brian, you're on your way up.
For a while.
The second is, moving into some quasi-judicial public hearings. I do not have my cheat sheet.
I have mine. And we have a new procedure, so I'll summarize that and, and we'll go forward. The, all public testimony in this quasi-judicial procedure will be taken under oath in a moment that everyone who anticipates testifying, including Brian, will raise the right hands and be sworn and then be subject to cross-examination. All documents and exhibits shall be entered into evidence with our clerk. And the giving of opinion testimony is limited to experts. And closing arguments will be limited to evidence of the record. So, that will be the procedure that we go through. The, at this point, we can go ahead and swear any witnesses that anticipate testifying here this evening. So, if you plan on talking about the annexation ordinance, if you want to say, "Don't pass it," or you want to say, "Do pass it," or just want to comment about the annexation ordinance, if you'll stand up right now and face our city clerk and raise your right hand, please.
Don Willis.
Brian Thomas.
Do you hereby swear a form that the testimony you are about to give is the whole truth and nothing but truth?
I do.
Mr. Mayor, pro temp, next item on the agenda is the disclosure of ex parte communications. If any of our commissioners or yourself has had communications outside of this hearing, we need to disclose that now and talk about whether that communication would influence your vote in any way.
Okay. I'll go ahead and pull the dais, moving from my right to left. Commissioner Coleman?
I've talked to all three. Pat Post, Coleman and Coleman, and Troy Fowler on this. And it would, what, discussions of people that didn't, these three that didn't see the previous meeting is what was brought up. No opinion either way.
Commissioner Hersam?
Myself, I have no significant conversations that I can recall, other than Mr. Kevin Coleman asked me this morning if it was on the agenda tonight. I confirmed that it was. But otherwise, no effect to my voting. Commissioner Glanzer? None as well.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, pro temp. The next item is if anyone wishes to be a party intervenor. They should stand up and they should disclose what their special interest or special injury related to the application is different than the public at large. So, if anybody chooses to do that.
Seeing none?
At this time, we will hear from the city in overview of the application.
All right. And then we're on regarding ordinance 2019-01.
Yes, sir. That's exactly right.
Take it away.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The brief overview is that we have an area, a fairly large area. It's about 610 acres. On the west side of the Newberry area, it's, the area that you see shaded there is in unincorporated Latua County right now. It is surrounded on the northeast and south by the municipal boundaries of the City of Newberry, and on the west by the county line, Gilchrist County. We've had several property owners in this area, some of the larger property owners, that have requested to annex voluntarily. But to do so is, will be considered by the county most likely to be to creating enclaves. They don't, they don't consider this pocket to be an enclave. They consider it to be a pocket instead. And so, the way to remedy that is to have a ballot referendum where each of the, the voters that live in that area receive a ballot from the Supervisor Elections Office. They vote on whether they want to be annexed in or whether they do not want to be annexed in. If 50% of the voters that respond, or 50%, plus one, respond favorably, then it would, the annexation would take place. If they, 50% minus one, then it would fail. I said that right. If over 50% say no, then it would fail. And so, again, as a reminder, there's a total of 34 parcels, almost 610 acres. Within the area, there are 60, currently 69 registered voters, 21 of which are also owners of property in the area, and 48 of which are registered voters in the area, but they don't actually own property. They'd be tenants of one sort or another. Nine of the parcels are vacant, which constitutes almost 300 acres, almost in half the entirety. And the voluntary annexation applications we have received are for six of these 34 parcels for a total of 328-plus acres. And so, again, there's the entirety of the area. The area in Turquoise is where the voluntary annexations have been requested. We have applications in hand. The green area is the rest of the area where we have not received applications. So, a little bit over 50% of the, of the land mass itself, we have applications for, for bringing into the City of Newberry. This is the, you know, as I said, the, the registered voters in the area will be sent a mail ballot. Takes just a simple majority for approval. It would become effective if voted in favor. It would become effective on April 26th of 2019. If it fails, then you have to wait two more years before you can come back with another voter referendum initiative. However, within that two-year period, you can still do, you can still accept voluntary annexation applications. And so, the ballots are scheduled to be mailed out on March 27th, returned by April 16th at 7:00 p.m. Because of the small number, the count will be rather quick. And the Supervisor Elections will be back with the results within probably 24, 48 hours tops. And so, the staff recommendation is to enact ordinance 2019-01. On second reading, proceed with the scheduling of the referendum ballot.
Thank you, Brian. And I'll yield back to the attorney.
Anyone wishes to speak out against the annexation proposal? Or anyone wishes to support the proposal? Now is the time to do so. So, if you want to talk for or against the annexation, this would be the time to do that.
Don't everybody jump at once. Mr. Willis? Chair, I recognize Mr. Don Wilson has been duly sworn.
Yeah, I'm against the annexation of my property. I don't know why other people have to make decisions whether I'll be forced to be annexed into the City of Newberry. I mean, I'm totally against all this. That's my opinion.
Understood. Okay. Which property is yours, Mr. Willis?
251410.
Okay. Very good. Thank you for your comments. Anyone else? Chair recognizes Kevin Coleman, and he has been duly sworn.
Yeah, I just went through this process about 15 years ago, trying to get it in and come close. But during that process, I was talking to the city, a county, about different things. And they said, "Yeah, the City of Newberry should bring that in." But, you know, it never happened. So, anyway, I'm for the annexation. I mean, not that I'm going to do anything with the property. I'm just going to rather deal with the City of Newberry than deal with Kingsville.
And which property is yours, Mr. Coleman? I know which one it is, but just for the record.
I don't even know what the address is on it.
Okay. The big one along the south. Very good. Any other further comments? Floor yields back to the attorney.
Mr. Mayor, pro temp, if anybody wishes to cross-examine our planner who testified earlier or wishes to cross-examine any of the witnesses, seeing none, at this point, the, we can respond to the testimony as the chair deems necessary. And at this point, we can begin our deliberations. And with that, I'll go ahead and read the, the title of the ordinance. And this procedure, we're not going to announce in the next series of annexations since, since it's the same type of procedure, Mr. Mayor.
Understood.
This is Ordinance 2019-01, in ordinance of the City of Newberry, Florida, annexing approximately 609.68 acres of property that is generally located on the south of Northwest 8th Lane, west of 266th Street, north of Southwest 15th Avenue, and east of 298th Street, as more specifically described in this ordinance pursuant to Chapter 171 of the Florida statutes, making certain findings, providing for inclusion of the property in Chapter 1, Section 114 of the city's Code of Ordinances, providing for a referendum election, providing directions to our city clerk, providing ballot language, providing for land use plan, zoning, and subdivision regulations, and enforcement of same, providing for persons engaged in any occupation, business, trade, or profession, providing for a severability clause, and providing an effective date. Appropriate motion is passed. Ordinance 2019-01, as read by Title Only.
At this time, I undertake a motion to at least put it on the floor for further discussion.
Motion. Motion to put it on the floor for discussion.
Okay. I have a motion from Commissioner Hersam and a second from Commissioner Glanzer. The dais, does it care to make any further discussion or respond, as the attorney read, to any of the comments made previously? Commissioner Coleman, read. Commissioner Coleman, read.
Yeah, um, we got, um, I was trying to count it up, four, four, five, six, seven, eight. So, uh, on these, um, uh, uh, my, my question is, is on these that, now I'm just gonna use Troy Fowler's parcel. Um, that's not gonna stop him from, uh, it, let's say it doesn't pass, Mr. Mayor, um, that's not gonna stop him from utilities or any of that stuff, right, for, uh, for, for building there, same as Mr. Coleman?
Uh, on Kirk, I've, as far as I know, uh, no, I don't specifically know what the electrical territorial boundary is right there. I know there's, uh, close proximity between central Florida and the city, but... City manager, you want to comment?
Mister, um, Mister Mayor, the, the annexation does not affect electric service provider, and the only effect it would have on any of the utility survivor, uh, customers is not whether they can have utilities or not, but whether there may be a surcharge. Um, we currently don't charge, uh, surcharges for, uh, out of city customers, um, but most cities do, so it's, it's, uh, something that could be anticipated, that customers outside of our city limits may pay a slight surcharge, um, to, to be customers. But other than that, it, it, there's no, no effect on our ability to provide the service.
Further comment?
Well, the only other thing is, is the people that are hopefully watching on TV on this is that, um, you're paying a stormwater tax, or fee, I'm not sure what it is, in that area, and I believe at least your fire assessment is at least doubled. So, um, might want to look at that before you make your vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Coleman. Commissioner Glanzer?
So, uh, Mr. Mayor, if the voters approve, if the voters approve the referendum, the county cannot undo it, or overturn it, can they? Okay. No, okay, he said no. And the second thing was, um, I stand by my opinion originally that this is a huge enclave already. I don't know why the county doesn't see it that way, but every way you look at it, it's a big old enclave, and we need to close them up. So I'm in favor of this referendum.
Thank you, Commissioner, Ms., uh, Glanzer. Commissioner Hursom Farnsworth, you have any comments?
Just re, go, my objection to the county calling this a pocket, you know, but, yeah.
Sure, sure.
The definition is important.
Uh, sure. Uh, my, my comment is, uh, there's almost a dynamic here of competing property rights, uh, for the owners. You have the property owners on the western end that are kind of blocked by the, uh, property owners that are towards the eastern end. Uh, I'm kind of glad that we're able, there is a process in place for those owners to decide amongst themselves diplomatically through the referendum to, to try to get this resolved. Uh, certainly not an initiative that the city particularly has any significant hand in, other than just kind of helping, uh, the process along. And at this point, it's a matter of leaving it up to the members, should this pass, or the member properties, should this pass, uh, and leaving it, leaving it up to them. It does take place pretty quickly. I would encourage everybody that gets a ballot to return it. Uh, the numbers, the fifty percent plus one are just on the return. It's not a total. So if three people pa, send in their ballot, and two of them are for, and one is against, it passes. Same is true if, if the reverse. So it is a matter, unless I understood wrong, it's a matter of the number of returned ballots. And I'm getting a nod from, uh, Brian that that is, that is accurate, so, um, no further discussion on the dais. Um, do we have one more opportunity for the public's input at all?
There is a, there is a, um, there is a motion on the floor, and the chair, uh, is, may allow the participants to respond to any testimony or the motion as the chair deems, uh, response is necessary in order to ensure fairness and due process. So yes, there is that opportunity.
Okay, uh, chair recognizes in fairness and due process, any further, uh, discussion from the public, or anything else come to mind? Mr. Willis? Feel free to come back up. Chair recognizes Mr. Willis.
As I said on, uh, first time I came up here, two weeks ago, fire can't get to me. There's no way a fire truck can get there. But the ambulance can, and they're in. I don't mind paying the county fees.
Mm-hmm.
There's no reason, reason to be in here. If a fire truck can't get to, like, the ground.
Okay. Shooting from the hip, can I ask you, how come, how can an ambulance get there without, and a fire truck not be able to get to?
I've got a dump truck.
Okay.
It takes an, an issue for me to get to my place, with my dump truck. Fire truck's a lot of, and not make a return.
So it's a distant thing, okay. Um, I know Commissioner Coleman had mentioned that the fire assessment in the county is actually, uh, maybe as much as twice the amount of that in the city. Would you rather pay half, or double?
I'd pay ten.
So indifferent? Okay, all right, just, just asking.
I mean, I'd, I'd rather pay somebody that I know can't get to my place, rather than pay the city of Newberry, or the county to get to my place. The county's vehicle's coming, sorry, and the ambulance.
Are you aware that we're gonna be getting an ambulance in April?
Yeah, I don't know.
Okay, fair enough, Mr. [inaudible].
Just, just for everyone's, um, edification, uh, through interlocal agreements, all fire service in our region, whether it's provided by Newberry or Elachua County Fire Rescue, will be Newberry's truck coming, whether they can get to the site or not. So whether you're incorporated or not, Newberry's fire truck would come.
They can't get to you.
Understood, a, and the county is the only one authorized to provide ambulance service within the county. So whether you're a city resident or a county resident, it's a county, um, ambulance that shows up to your property. So, um, I, I understand. It's for everybody. I know you're aware, it's for everybody listening to get some clarity on, on those issues. And, and I, I think also, just for everyone's edification, the reason that the city is running, um, that staff is running, when you directed us to run two parallel annexation processes, one voluntary and one, um, through referendum, is with voluntary, only the people that want to come into the, to the city do, and the people that don't want to come in, uh, to the city, like Mr. Willis, would elect not to. Uh, if the county commission agrees to allow voluntary annexation, there won't be a referendum. With a referendum, somebody, unless it's unanimous, for or against, somebody is going to be unhappy. They're either gonna be unhappy that they wanted to be in Newberry and cannot be, or they're gonna be unhappy, like Mr. Willis, that they didn't want to be in Newberry, but they're being forced to be. So, you know, I think that those are the reasons that the county's approval of our request for voluntary annexation are important to residents in our region, whether they're incorporated or not.
Understood. Uh, you have anything else? Okay, thank you, Mr. Willis. Nothing else? Okay. Okay, all right, well, we will move on to the vote. All those in favor of the ordinance? Yes, we do. We do.
I thought I had a motion just to bring, to, to talk about, we have a motion to approve it.
Same, same difference. Uh, all those in favor of ordinance twenty nineteen dash zero-one, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, unanimous. The ordinance passes twenty nineteen dash zero-one. Okay, Brian, uh, you're up again for the quasi judicial, uh, public hearing and first reading of ordinance twenty nineteen zero-five. Take it away.
Uh, thank you, Mr. [inaudible]. But actually, um...
Is this microphone on? Is your microphone on?
Lit, there we go. Interesting. Um, because all of the, uh, the following, next three ordinances are related, uh, in terms of the voluntary annexation, I've only put together one, uh, presentation to discuss all three, but there are three separate, because e, um, each ordinance has to encumber, um, one grouping of contiguous properties or individual properties. That's why they're in three ordinances. And so, this is, um, Mr. Chair, this is the first reading of, uh, ordinance twenty nineteen oh-five, oh-six, and oh-seven, for voluntary annexation in the same area. Um, it's a total of six parcels, but they encumber over fifty percent of the overall area that we were discussing in the unincorporated area, three hundred and twenty-eight plus acres. Uh, it's four total property owners. Again, uh, as we saw before, the, the areas in green are those that have not put in voluntary annexation applications. Those in blue are the ones that have. And so, uh, the large section to the west is twenty nineteen dash oh-five. The large, oddly-shaped, but single parcel to the, uh, south and east is, uh, twenty nineteen dash oh-six, and twenty nineteen dash oh-seven is the single parcel on the northeastern, uh, side of the diagram. Uh, the county was notified of the voluntary annexation, uh, procedure moving forward, um, and so they did provide us with a response. Um, similar map, the, their contention is that, uh, state, uh, statute does not define the, uh, county line as a, as a border that would create, uh, an enclave that would close the enclave, and therefore, the entire area is not to be considered a, an actual enclave, but in, instead, it's a pocket. Um, the voluntary annexations, therefore, under their interpretation, would create a total of six new enclaves. Um, each one is pointed out there in, in red. Um, the only area in white that would not be an enclave is the far western side. There's three small parcels to the, to the northwest, and that's because they have but the county line, which doesn't create an enclave in their interpretation, so therefore, that would not be an enclave. So, um, again, by the county's interpretation, the staff interpretation, rather, would be, it would be six new enclaves, instead of one large enclave. Staff's recommendation at this time is to go ahead and approve the three ordinances on first reading, and then to put the, uh, ordinances into a holding pattern until we find the, uh, results, either the results of the annexation referendum for the entire area, or, um, we get word back from the, the county, uh, through the mayor, that they're going to allow the voluntary annexations to go through without objection, in which case, we could withdraw the, uh, referendum ballot.
Understood. Okay. Uh, chair recognizes the attorney.
If anyone wishes to speak for or against this voluntary annexation, they should do so now.
Chair recognizes Mr. Coleman, who has been duly sworn from before.
So basically, on this referendum here, the folks that doesn't want to come in could possibly not come in, and the ones that do could.
That's right. This is a voluntary annexation, so it's just the petitioners, or just the folks that want to come into the city is, is all we're talking about.
And, uh, county is gonna be the ones that have to say so, or not?
County may object, they are indicating that they are objecting to the annexation, uh, is what, is what is being laid out to us. And, and this is, the voluntary annexation, we've done ninety-nine percent of the annexations, the city of Newberry have been done through this procedure, voluntary annexation.
Right. But because of that enclave, they, they want to shut it down?
Well, they, they are interpreting that, I guess it's a difference of opinion. We're, we're interpreting as filling in these areas, and they're saying, "No, you're creating more enclaves." So we have a fundamental difference of opinion. Good point. And this is, this is county staff's position thus far, and their commission may or may not object to this. It remains to be seen.
All right, thank you.
Sure.
Chair recognizes Commissioner Glanzer.
When will they be hearing it? Do you know the date, so we can show up, or the citizens can show up?
Um, I transmitted an email to the county manager, Lieberman, I believe last Tuesday or Wednesday, requesting a new date. We actually were on their agenda with a request to consider this last Tuesday, and, um, and what transpired was, is rather than consider it, they, they allowed me to share what the ask, the request is, that they said they had no backup information, um, and they felt it was inappropriate to consider the request without, you know, staff's position, a staff report, more information, uh, from the city. So, um, that was last Tuesday, so on Wednesday, I transmitted an email request, asking, uh, to be on the first agenda after this week. So hopefully, next Tuesday, which would be March the fifth, um, would be the soonest we've asked for an evening slot.
Chair recognizes Commissioner Coleman.
I will have to give it to our, uh, city manager. Mike New was there, had all the paperwork and everything, and they're actually, I watched it, uh, live, and, uh, he's too kind. There was only one commissioner there that was, uh, not agreeable to anything, and I'm sure y'all probably know who it is. So, I think if, uh, it wouldn't have been for him, I think everything might have went a lot more smoother, so.
Understood. Okay, just to kind of recap, reset a little bit, uh, these three will address independently, uh, and they are the parallel track that the city manager was mentioning earlier, that are running kind of in parallel with the referendum. In the event that the referendum doesn't go through, these voluntary ones can continue, continue on, uh, but if the rent, referendum passes, then these can just be taken back off the table. There? Okay, so we all kind of on the same page. Uh, Mr. Attorney, where are we in the process now?
If anybody wishes to cross-examine Brian at this stage, that would be the time to do that, and if not, then we'll go into further deliberations, but I'll go ahead and read the ordinance, and we'll put it on the floor. This is ordinance number two thousand nineteen dash zero-five, in ordinance of the city of Newberry, Florida, annexing certain portions of unincorporated Elachua County. That includes tax parcels number zero-two-five-one-five dash zero-zero-three dash zero-zero-eight, zero-two-five-one-five dash zero-zero-four dash zero-zero-zero, zero-two-five-one-five dash zero-zero-four dash zero-zero-one, and zero-two-five-one-five zero-zero-four dash zero-zero-two. More specifically described in this ordinance as petitioned for by the property owners pursuant to section one seven-one point oh-four-four of the Florida statutes, making certain findings, providing for land use, zoning, and land development regulations, and enforcement of the same, providing directions to the city clerk, and clerk of the commission, providing a severability clause, and provided an immediate effective date. Appropriate motion is to pass ordinance number two thousand nineteen dash zero-five, as read by title only.
So note, or, uh, uh, it says, note to approve ordinance two nine, two thousand nineteen dash zero-five, and second?
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Coleman, and a second by Commissioner Farnsworth. Is there any further discussion on the dais regarding the motion? Hearing none, in the interest of due process, fairness is there any further from the public? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The ayes having unanimous.
Mr. Mayor?
Chair recognizes Commissioner Coleman.
Uh, the, for, uh, Dee, uh, I just want to, I, I am a family member, and, uh, leave it to, uh, our city attorney if he wants to be included in this vote.
Understood. Uh, chair recognizes the city attorney.
Mr. Mayor, we'll go ahead and go through that. If this inursts to your private gain, then you can, uh, recuse yourself from the vote. That's basically the standard that we have. Uh, we'll go through this exact same procedure again, and the, uh, city will present the overview of this particular ordinance. Which I think he's joking.
Brian, is your submission just per what we went through correct?
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. City attorney, uh, if you could just go ahead and read... City Attorney, if you could just go ahead and read through the ordinance.
I'm happy to do that. This will be ordinance.
Nineteen dash zero six.
Got it. This is an ordinance of the city of Newberry, Florida, annexing certain portions of unincorporated Elatua County that includes tax parcel number 025-14-000-000. More specifically described in this ordinance as petitioned for by the property owners pursuant to the Section 171.044 of the Florida statutes, making certain findings, providing for land use, zoning, and land development regulations, and enforcement of the same, providing directions to the clerk of the commission, providing a severability clause, and providing an immediate effective date. Appropriate motion is to pass ordinance number 2019-06 as read by Title Only.
Do I hear a motion?
I'm going to suggest that Commissioner Coleman recuse himself just for formality sake. That's where I'm at, too. I don't, I'll feel a whole lot more comfortable. I don't think Kevin would ever give me anything, but I'll probably need to be back out of this.
We do have a motion from Commissioner Glanzer and a second from Commissioner Hersom. Is there any further discussion from the dais? Hearing none. Any further discussion from the public? Again, this is on the Coleman track, that's the southern end of the aforementioned area. Hearing none, all those in favor, minus Commissioner Coleman, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it unanimously. Ordinance 2019-06 passes. Brian, we already heard your testimony regarding ordinance 2019-07. Chair recognizes the city attorney to read such ordinance.
Ordinance number 2019-07, an ordinance of the city of Newberry, Florida, annexing certain portions of unincorporated Elatua County that includes tax parcel number 025-14-006-000. More specifically described in this ordinance as petitioned for by the property owner pursuant to Section 171.044 of the Florida statutes, making certain findings, providing for land use, zoning, and land development regulations, and enforcement of the same, providing directions to the clerk of the commission, providing a severability clause, and provided an immediate effective date. Appropriate motion is to pass ordinance number 2019-07 as read by Title Only.
Chair recognizes any motion?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion from Commissioner Hersom. Do I hear your second? We have a second from Commissioner Farnsworth. This particular ordinance, 2019-07, again, has to do with Troy Fowler's property, kind of in the middle on the eastern side entrance off of 337. I don't want to gloss over the process, but is there any further discussion by the dais on this property? Any further from the public? Hearing none, all those in favor of ordinance 2019-07, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it unanimously. Ordinance passes. Okay. Brian, you're still on deck here for the first agenda item, Newberry Town Center, Phase Three Final Platte. You have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The construction plans for Phase Three were approved last year, I think actually sometime around April. In the intervening months, the contract, or the developer rather, has completed probably about two-thirds of the, of the infrastructure necessary for Phase Three without using a surety device. As a recap, Phase Three is twenty-four single-family cottage-style homes and twenty-seven single-family regular-style homes, a little bit larger lots. The, to finish out, the remaining roughly third of the infrastructure, the developer has provided a surety device. It has been reviewed and approved by the city attorney, and he now seeks approval of the final platte for Phase Three so that he can also pull building permits and start building actual houses in advance of the completion of the infrastructure for Phase Three. But none of the, none of the homes built in advance can be provided with a certificate of occupancy until the infrastructure is all complete and approved by the city. So it works in parallel.
Understood. The chair will entertain a motion at this time and put it on the floor for discussion.
And this is the same quasi-judicial procedure, so you've been previously sworn this evening, and you're still under oath, Brian. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
This is quasi-judicial as well?
It is quasi-judicial as well. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak for or against the platte approval process that we are going through here this evening? Seeing none, is there anyone who wishes to cross-examine Brian at this stage? Mr. Mayor, with that, I'll go ahead and read the, the motion would be to approve the platte for Country Way, Newberry, Phase Three with final platte approval, approve the surety agreement, and approve the final review of city survey. That would be the appropriate motion.
The chair will entertain a motion at this time.
Motion to approve. Second.
We have a motion from Commissioner Farnsworth and a second from Commissioner Coleman. Floor is open for discussion. Anybody? Nobody? Any discussion from the public? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion as read by the city attorney and offered by Commissioner Farnsworth, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it unanimously. Final platte approval, surety device, and the review passes by the city survey. Item number B, under Agenda Items, are we done with the quasi?
We are.
Okay. We'll yield back to regular order. Acquisition of five-acre property from Norita Davis for the Elatua County Agricultural Extension Offices. Mike, I have noticed that you are up on this one.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We've got a really brief presentation. This is an issue that the commission is well familiar with. Back in November, the commission authorized the mayor to enter into an interlocal agreement with Elatua County that had a couple of requirements on the city's point, one of which was to acquire five acres from the adjacent property from Norita Davis, and, and prepare it for use by Elatua County for their cooperative extension offices and for the conference center associated with that, all part of Elatua County's agricultural complex, the new county fairgrounds. So we took that, we've negotiated a contract, the contract is in your backup, it's been vetted by the city attorney. The agreement is exactly as we told you it was going to be in November, is to acquire the land for sixty thousand dollars per acre. The agreement indicates that we plan to close by July the eleventh, and that the agreement, we will close pending successful rezoning of Canterbury by Elatua County. They have a rezoning application that is working its way through our processes, our planning and zoning board will hear it next Monday night, and then it'll come before the city commission for consideration. So if that is successful, we will close on this property, they will close on Canterbury, and we'll, we'll move forward with the Elatua County agricultural facilities. If the rezoning is for some reason unsuccessful, or there's some other reason that we have an off-ramp, the city is not obligated to acquire this, which is why I point that out to you. The funding for the project will come through the Wild Spaces, will come from Wild Spaces' Public Places revenues. If you'll advance one slide, Amy. This is kind of a aerial view. The top view is, is, shows the whole Norita Davis parcel and Canterbury immediately to the west of it or to the left, kind of shows in red relative to their property boundaries. And then the lower view is a magnified view that shows what that five-acre piece is going to look like. It's not a perfect rectangle, it's got a little bit of an L shape to it. Survey is scheduled to commence this week. We should have the survey results back in a week or so to procure exactly five acres. And next slide is staff's recommendation to authorize city manager to execute the agreement, which is in your backup, to acquire approximately five, approximately five-point-oh acres, so that's very precise, to acquire five-point-oh acres of property adjacent to Canterbury Equestrian Center from Norita Davis.
The chair will recognize a motion at this time.
I make a motion to approve purchase.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Chair recognizes a motion by Commissioner Glanzer to approve purchase of the property and a second by Commissioner Coleman. Ms. Glanzer, you have an additional comment?
I do, I just had a quick question, it's not relative to my vote, but do you have any idea if we approve it when IFIS would start construction, or when they would, what their planned timeframe is to move out here?
Well, the county will build the facility. So once they have their rezoning and this property in tow, in their control, the way they're going to get it in their control is the city's going to enter into a ninety-nine year lease. So we will always own the property and lease it to the county for use for the extension agents' offices and for the conference center. But then they will, their architect and site civil folks will put together a site plan that shows the proposed improvements. That will again come back to the city for consideration and approval, and then they would commence construction. So I don't anticipate you'll see the ground breaking in 2019, but I do foresee that ground could be broken early 2020. I also believe just as long as there are no major hiccups, probably the Elatua County Youth Fair would be at Canterbury next spring.
Any other further discussion?
Good question.
Commissioner Hersom.
Mike, you know, at some point there had been talk about trying to put the IFIS property closer to 26. Was there any other discussion of why it was set back off the road?
If you'll back up one slide. We negotiated as hard as we could to, to get it as far south as possible. It kind of culminated in meeting onsite with the Davises, with Cindy from the county extension offices, and, and myself, although I was just kind of in attendance. They agreed on what would be best, what the Davises were willing to do. What you see is, is our rendering of, of that conclusion. We have a surveyor out there, it's still subject to approval by both parties, but the, as I understood, the Davises were uncomfortable sliding it all the way to the front, they felt like it wasn't as advantageous to the potential sale of the rest of the property.
Chair recognizes Commissioner Coleman.
I know you've got to have a willing seller and a willing buyer, so a lot of times price is not there, but are we, are we at least going to get some type of commercial appraisal on this, just to see how bad it's going to hurt us, even though I know it, we're sitting at what, three hundred thousand?
Mr. Mayor, we, we don't anticipate going through that expense. Usually the appraisal process, the appraiser will recognize that when you have a captive audience, in this case, there's only one property that is adjacent to Canterbury. We can't do an RFP and negotiate our best price with whoever's selling property in town because we needed to be contiguous to the, to the campus for Canterbury. That said, the seller said from the beginning that they have no interest in getting any more out of the entire hundred and seventy-five acres than what they got in it. And so we were able to access the county property appraiser site to see what they have in it. This, this price is in keeping with that thought. And furthermore, to the best of my recollection, when the Canterbury site was appraised, the appraisals on the unit cost for dirt exceeded sixty thousand dollars. So I, I don't, in a competitive process, there would be a better price potentially, but I think given all those circumstances, we had a very fair-minded seller, and we got the best price we could. This public hearing, it's somewhere in the staff report, it says we're having a public meeting to discuss this contract publicly. That is to meet a state law that says that we either have to have an appraisal or this meeting, and staff thought that this was best and certainly most economical.
Yeah.
Good. Anything else? I'll add, I don't know exactly where I heard it, to speak to Commissioner Glanzer's comment earlier, but I, I thought I heard somebody tell me that the extension offices already kind of started looking at architectural items to try to start designing the building. I do kind of think the opportunity to make use of the waterfront, therefore it may be a cool kind of feature, to what the manager said, to what the manager said, what?
Waterfront.
The, the pond there.
This is man-made pond.
Yeah.
It's a really nice pond, and.
I mean, if they could put a glass, you know, something over there to look over that, I think it'd be a pretty neat feature. To, to what the manager was saying, where the regards to the price, I mean, natural side of things, we'd always want to pay less, but I do think it's a fair market at this point, giving, given everything else over there in that area. And I do recall him making mention that they'd try to reserve the most southern part for more of a retail option for them, and there's going to be setbacks that are needed over in that area as well. So those are my comments. Does the public have any comments that they'd like to make about the contract on the, on the floor? This is for purchasing the five acres as the diagram indicates. Chair recognizes.
Jim Stainfield, citizen. Did we ever consider the Weisman property on the other side of Canterbury?
I can speak briefly to that, if anybody else has any addition. I think the combination was cost prohibitive, and the fact that it was quote-unquote retail on the actual roadway, I think they wanted a lot more for it, Weisman wanted a lot more for it than the Davises.
I'm trying to think, if the road snakes through, there's an area that is not necessarily a retail property.
Memory strikes me that Weisman wanted to charge a lot more for that.
The, the going price for the property on the west side of the road was a hundred thousand an acre, and that was considered to be fair market value, given the zoning and the access to utilities that was there. And then the road divides the property, so that was a, an obstacle that the county extension office wasn't as fond of. We even considered relocating the road to, to the flip side, moving, moving the entrance rate further to the west so that the additional five acres could be contiguous, but we were already paying more for land, the cost of real estate would have exceeded a hundred thousand dollars, so we, we felt like that it was just best to stick with, the low-cost option was to stick to the property on the east side.
That answer your question? Okay. Chair recognizes Commissioner Glanzer.
And just on a side note, I think Mr. Weisman's vision for that, it's about thirty-five acres, I think, it would be chopping it up to put a, an educational facility-type building there, right in the middle of a shopping center, whatever he has a vision for there. So it really would chop it up, I think, and then the price was almost twice as much as what we got for this property.
Okay. Any further comments, questions from the floor, from the public? Okay. Motion on the floor is approval for the purchase of the five-acre property, otherwise noted as the five acres in the Davis section there. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Motion passes as well. Item C is the Community Development Block Grant Subgrant Agreement, and I have noted that Brian's taking this one. Brian, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As you know, this is the Community Development Block Grant Subgrant Agreement. The federal government provides the funds to the state, the state then subgrants to the local municipalities. In this case, this is for a housing rehabilitation grant. Just as a reminder, we, the city was notified in December that we had been awarded seven hundred thousand dollars for housing rehabilitation. Basically provides rehab for low and moderate income residents within the city on housing repairs. I believe there'll be a minimum of ten houses that'll be rehabilitated to current standards. We went through the administrative services procurement process and selected a consultant, some of professional services. We've now received the actual grant agreement, which is before you. The grant agreement ultimately ends June of 2021, or earlier if. The grant agreement ultimately ends June of 2021, or earlier if the project's completed prior to that. And so, staff recommendation is to authorize the mayor to sign the subgrant award agreement and associated documents.
Chair will entertain the motion at this time, to put it on the floor. We have a motion by Commissioner Farnsworth, a second by Commissioner Coleman. The motion is now on the floor, we'll open for discussion on the dais. Commissioner Farnsworth, you recognize?
The properties are gonna be rehabbed, is that determined by the city?
Mr. Mayor, there's an application process that's gonna start in March. It'll be conducted by the, by our contractor, Summit Professional Services. They'll begin taking applications in March. The application process will go through June of this year, after which then they'll start ranking those applicants, and they'll pick the top 10, and then they'll start the actual individual property assessments. You have to do environmental assessments, various kinds, there might be lead abatement, there might be asbestos abatement, inspections and potential abatement. And some of the houses may actually require so much work that it's actually more cost-effective to have them demoed and then build another house onsite. So, by the end of June, the applications will be, process will be complete, and then in July, they start the actual evaluation and awards process for the participants.
Does Summit oversee the construction process?
Sure, they basically do the administration over the entire process. They report to us constantly throughout the process, but they are gonna do all the administration, so they'll be doing, they'll be processing the applications, they'll be processing the grant requirements, documentation requirements, coordinating the inspections for any kind of environmental assessments that need to be done, and then ultimately, they'll oversee the contractors.
So, any, city staff has minimal involvement with it, or?
Yes, sure, that's the reason that we are paying them the money that we are paying out of the grant, because, and actually, I have a little bit of experience with this. When I was with the Regional Planning Council, we administered them for some cities, and the amount of work that goes into one of these is pretty substantial. It's a constant series of reporting and investigation, so it's pretty thorough and comprehensive. So, they will end up earning their money by the time this is over.
Any further comment from the dais?
Maybe just a point of clarification, so the city will not have any part of the process in terms of selecting who, which properties are, will receive this, so it will be done by the administrative contract.
Sure, it's correct, there's a set of criteria that, for qualifying, based on income considerations, and I believe also the condition of the house. And so, those will all be taken, all of those criteria will be evaluated and then ranked from 1 to 10, and then if there's money left over, they'll go to the next beyond that.
Any further? I would just submit my boilerplate answer, that I'm always opposed to the federal grants. Our country's $22 trillion in debt. I just don't feel like saddling our children or grandchildren who have potentially not even been born yet with additional debt. I also always have the caveat that these grants come with their own strings, which ironically are gonna be coming up later on in item E. So, for what it's worth, does the public have any comments about the grant subgrant application? Seeing none, we'll come back to the dais. Commissioner Glanzer.
I have a boilerplate answer too, that if we don't get the grant, some other city in Newbury, or Florida will get it, and so, I vote to have it come to our community.
Still no reason to keep digging ourselves in the hole, but roll call vote, Commissioner Coleman?
Aye.
Commissioner Herschel?
Aye.
Commissioner Farnsworth?
Aye.
I will vote no. Commissioner Glanzer?
Aye.
Vote is four to one, the motion passes. Agenda item D, appointment of the opioid task force, and the chair recognizes Commissioner Glanzer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Boy, we had some wonderful applicants for this. I was so impressed with the credibility of all of them, and I wish we had 10 seats, because every single person that applied is worthy of being sat here. But that being said, if you don't mind, I'd make, I have five recommendations, and I could briefly explain why I would choose these five. First one is Dr. Karen Moody, she's a doctor of psychology who focuses actually on non-pharmaceutical pain management, and this is an opioid task force, so we appreciate people who have been in the trenches in this. Karen Mott, she's a substance abuse counselor. Erin Peterson, she's a member of Electric County Polysubstance Abuse Task Force and the Marion County Heroin Opioid Task Force. Whitney Spelacy, she actually, she's a manager of Youth Health UF Health Pediatrics with experience in the whole healthcare system, so she could navigate our way through that if that becomes a part of what the task force wants to do. And number five is Sherri Jones, she's in law enforcement and social services. She has spent eight years in counseling with individuals and families. So, as I said, I think, because this is a first opportunity, we've had to engage in the business of opioid abuse, I recommend that we select people that are in the, in the business of it already. So, that's my, my choice, and I don't know how you wanna make a vote, or y'all, you wanna make opinions on it too. Thank you.
All right, very good points. Mr. Attorney, we do have Resolution 2019-07. If you wanna read through that, then we'll ask for a motion after that, then we can assume that the motion is what Commissioner Glanzer had just mentioned. We can add or amend names as the commission sees fit, if that's fair with everybody.
Can you say it again, Tim?
Okay, so Commissioner Glanzer has made some recommendations for names. The city attorney is going to read through the resolution and have those names attached to the resolution, the motion on the floor. And we will be able to go through the members, we can add, or sorry, we can swap names through any amendments, if we wanna do it that way. Does that make sense? Does that sound clumsy?
Sounds very clumsy. Why don't we just each give the list of our nominations, and then whoever has the most nomination to the, by the two?
Commissioner Coleman?
To my fellow commissioners, I just, I want you to know that Kathy Thomas is, is almost like Jordan Marlowe's sister. If we're gonna get somebody out there to actually go out and fundraise and get with these people, she's our girl. I mean, she's incredible with all, with everybody she talks to up there, out there. She's done so good with the Watermelon Festival and bringing in all these people, so I agree with everything, but we need Kathy on this board if we're gonna make it successful for a brand. Most of your doctor types are not gonna, I mean, I shouldn't say it like that, they probably will, but Kathy, she's the go-getter, she's the money girl.
Okay, before we get too far... Okay, your comments noted, Commissioner Herschel. Just before we get too far down the road with this, let's go ahead and have the attorney at least read through the resolution, and then we can, I don't know, help me out here.
The, what I can do is read the title of the resolution, and the maker of the motion can say, "Look, I would like to have these five names placed in the, in the, in the area for the people to serve on the committee, and that can be seconded, or you can come up with a different set of names." So, I'll go ahead and read this by title only, this is Resolution 2019-07, "The Resolution of the City of Newbury, Florida, and Appointing Members to Serve on the Opioid Task Force for the City of Newbury, Florida." And next, the maker of the motion should tell us what names they want to put into the resolution.
Okay. Chair recognizes Commissioner Glanzer.
I wonder, is there a reason why we only have, can have five members?
No, I think in a odd number, set of numbers is all you need, seven, five, whatever.
Or could we have an additional, like an alternate?
Yes, mhm.
I mean, I'd vote to have seven, I guess maybe more people you have, though you have more, you know, I don't know. I don't have a problem with having seven if the board is for favor of that, because we certainly have seven people who are qualified and willing to serve.
In the, well, I can tell you, I think we're all are aware of the, the mayor's kinda point on this effort. He had made mention on several occasions, both privately and publicly, that his intent was to have all applicants involved at some level as much as possible. I think designating the five was his attempted effort at signifying, and these are the five that are going to meet. I don't think there's any argument that probably an alternate, maybe two, in the event that something happens to one of the primary five, is probably a smart idea. But definitely the, the hope for the mayor at least was for all 10 applicants to at least be engaged in some form or another. He has spoken about the amount of work that is projected to be done by the task force. I think Commissioner Coleman makes a good point about Ms. Thomas's ability to fundraising, and I know that he didn't want the city being held liable for any of the funding. Chair recognizes Ms. Glanzer.
So, if I could amend my motion?
We don't need, we actually don't have a motion. Well, we don't have a motion on the floor really at this time.
Well, my discussion would be then, I would lean towards having seven members and add Kathy Thomas, and Naim Urched. That would make seven people, and I don't think that's too many. I think there's a lot of work to be done, I think spreading it out will help. And when you have a board, there's gonna be people who can't make it, and we maybe, we'll always have five here at least, if we have seven who are appointed, so that would be my.
So, your motion, if I'm hearing it correctly, would be original five? Sherri Jones, Karen Moody, Karen Moot, Erin Peterson, Whitney Spelling, those are the original five, and then your motion is to add Kathy Thomas and Naim Urched.
Right, I think it's Spelacy, I can check that, but anyway, for the record.
Oh, what did I say?
S.P.E.L.L.I.C.Y., you said spelling.
Oh, pardon me, Spelacy. I think you're right, sorry.
Yeah, L.L.I.C.Y.
And were you adding those two as alternates, did I hear you say?
No, I would, I would make a motion to have seven regular board members, task force board members. I don't think, you know, if you have to choose alternates, then it's like, well, they're not really on the board, and, you know, I think it's better to solid have seven members.
Is that a motion?
Yeah, can I make that, you said it wasn't time, but I would make that motion now then.
I was just kinda framing it properly, but I took it as your motion for the five plus the two.
My motion would be to have a seven-member task force, and those members would be, as stated by you, Karen Moody, Karen Mott, Erin Peterson, Whitney Spelacy, Sherri Jones, Kathy Thomas, and Naim Urched.
Okay, if there would be a second, then we can put that on the floor and debate it.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion for the seven members, and by Commissioner Glanzer, and a second by Commissioner Farnsworth. Madam Clerk, you have that? Okay, you have the names?
I do not have the names.
Okay, Jones, Moody, Moot, Peterson, Spelacy, Thomas, and Urched. Jones, Moody, Moot, Peterson, Spelacy, Thomas, and Urched. Mott. Gosh, sorry.
Moody, Mott?
Yep. Peterson, Spelacy, Thomas, Urched. So, we have a motion on the floor to that effect, we have a second, I'll open the floor to discussion.
My only concern is when you make a committee so big, then it becomes hard to actually function. One of the things I try to keep in mind is, don't have a group larger than, you can't feed with two pizzas. And once you get too big, once you get so many people in there, you know, it's, it tends to get hard to, to force some direction for things to get done. But certainly, I think, I would advocate that we need to have a... I concurred with Commissioner Coleman, I think Kathy Thomas is key on there, both with, as a pillar of the community in Newbury, but also for connections into the high school. That is, you know, when we're talking about opioids, most of the time, we're very often, we're concerned about it at, with, at the kid level, the child level, and having that connection in the high school is gonna be vitally important. I can be convinced for seven, but I just, I worry that we get the group too big to be fully functional.
Any other current, any further comments on the motion that's on the floor for the seven as listed? And Commissioner Coleman?
I'll be four to seven, and I'll throw in the extra money each meeting for that extra pizza.
Any further discussion from the public? Okay. Parliamentary-wise, at this point, it would be appropriate, if somebody wanted to offer an amendment, it would need a second to change any aspect, names or counts otherwise of what is currently on the floor. Does anybody feel that an amendment is appropriate, that they wanna offer? Commissioner Herschel, not to put you on the spot, but you're the only one that kinda...
No, I didn't feel moved bad enough to make an amendment.
Not moved, not moved.
To reduce it to five.
Okay, seeing any of the further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion on the floor, which I'll reiterate, is the five, the seven names, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, the motion passes. If, if at potentially any further junction, we have a motion that has passed, if we are, end up in a situation after conferring with the mayor, anybody who is on the prevailing side of the motion can bring it back for reconsideration at a later date. And just for the record, the mayor's out of town with the utility and electric legislative delegation in Washington, DC, so he's not here tonight. Moving right along. We're at Personnel Policy Update Resolution 2019-09. Dallas, you are recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As the commission remembers, in 2000, in December of 2016, the commission overhauled our personnel policy. It's adopted an entirely new personnel policy. So, we've now lived with those personnel policies for a little over two years. We've discovered some things in those personnel policies that we need to have updated or clarified. And then, as well as, we need to include some policies that keep us compliant with federal grant requirements. There is a copy of the strike through and underline personnel policy in your backup, if you'd like me to go through all of the changes. Otherwise, I have the biggest five on my PowerPoint here. Very exciting stuff. The first one is harassment policy adopted. The first thing we did is we went through, corrected a lot of grammatical errors and clarifications of existing policies. There were things like, employees is going to do this, we fixed that, so we sounded like we had some education. And then, we clarified a bunch of policies that were either things we accidentally omitted from the policy or practices that we meant to include, but in the transition, we just kinda forgot about, including some that we input into the policy just to codify existing policy. The first one is, first new thing is an adoption of updates to our EEO policy. This is required by our current grant requirements. Our EEO policy the city had was 99% compliant with grant requirements. The only thing the grant required us to do is add a reporting process. It says that if someone reports the EEO policy, we will record it and take action. So, we did add some language on page four and five that says that if someone reports something, that we will record it and keep a log of such. Exempt employee leave time policy, this is one of those policies that is kind of in practice now, but we wanted to codify it. Currently, if you're an exempt employee or a salary employee, technically, if you come to work for 15 minutes in a day, you are entitled to get paid for that entire day. We didn't think that was appropriate or... We didn't think that was appropriate or, or best practice, so we've changed that to follow federal FLSA laws. It says that if a salary employee shows up for at least half the day, they'll get paid for the entire day. If not, they do need to take their own vacation or sick time, and that's, like I said, congruent with federal labor laws. Drop vacation payments. This is a new policy. This is kind of an exciting policy. It's actually a win-win for both employees and the city. Currently, our vacation payout policy says that you are entitled to get your vacation paid out when you separate employment from the city. However, if you enter into the deferred retirement option plan or drop in the Florida retirement system, the Florida retirement system considers you retired, so by the time you actually leave employment from the city, that payout is just a payout. It doesn't count until your retirement doesn't increase your average salary, so you don't see any benefit to it aside from the payout. What we've done is added a policy that says when you enter into the drop, you can choose to take that payout at that time, and that'll count towards your FRS, and it'll count towards your salary in terms of your pension, but you cannot take a second payout. So this is a win-win because, A, the employee gets that payout into their FRS and gets to have that benefit in their pension, but it's a win to the city because it moves your liability forward in time, which makes it less valuable. An employee who gets paid out today is going to earn less money than an employee who gets paid out in five years. So most likely, that payout is going to be less costly to the city now than it will be in five years. So the employee gets the benefit of that increased payment into their pension. The city gets the benefit of not having to pay out as, as much of a costly payout. Disciplinary actions for violations of our drug-free workplace policy. Our current policy is a zero tolerance policy. The policy we're proposing gives the city more flexibility in terms of what happens if there is a drug-free workplace policy violation. It doesn't say that there are no penalties. It gives us the option of anywhere between, from termination at that time to drug remediation assistance, employee assistance programs. As an example, we could have an employee now who needs to take a drug test for whatever reason, and comes back that they took an Ambien last night, and they're not prescribed Ambien, and we would be forced to terminate them, even though there was maybe no cause between why they needed that drug test and perhaps that they took a non-prescribed drug. So this policy will allow us to have a little more flexibility and a little more leeway if we need it, but it doesn't say that, you know, it's still pretty strict if we need it. And then disciplinary probation. The city currently has disciplinary probation. We just never included it into our personnel policy. So this is codifying our existing, existing probation, probationary, disciplinary probation practices into our policy, just so they're in the, in the policy. And that's all the major updates. Like I said, I can go through all the minor ones if you'd like me to, but not the, if you have any questions.
Hey, we haven't read the Resolution 2019-09 yet, but we'll go ahead and get that done, and the city will recognize, or the chair will recognize the city attorney.
Mr. Mayor, pro tem, this is Resolution 2019-09, a resolution of the City of Newberry approving, authorizing the adoption by the City of Newberry Board of Commissioners of an amended personnel policy and manual, repealing all resolutions in conflict and providing an effective date. The appropriate motion is to pass Resolution Number 2019-09 as read by its title only.
Okay. The chair will now entertain a motion at this time, based on the staff's recommendation or any modification thereof.
Moved to approve.
We have a motion by Commissioner Farnsworth. Do I hear a second? I have a second by Commissioner Glanzer. The motion would be to accept as recommended by the staff, I assume?
Ten-four.
Okay. Does anybody have any discussion on the dais? Commissioner Farnsworth?
Regarding the drug policy, who will determine the punishment or recommendations or regarding, if somebody came back positive for illegal drug use? Is that going to be totally up to the city manager?
Mr. Mayor, all personnel decisions are ultimately up to the city manager.
Is there an opportunity for us to actually know what the particular drug is, or are we just getting a report of its false or its negative?
If we send someone for a drug test.
Yeah.
And it comes back positive, it will tell us what.
What it was for?
It'll tell us the chemical compounds.
Okay, all right. If you feel like that needs to be amended to be, remain as is, or change, that would be an opportunity to do that now. I, I was just wanting to make sure we knew what it actually was, to make an educated decision about it.
I don't know that much about drug testing, so.
I don't, I don't either. Commissioner Coleman, you have any comments, question? Commissioner Herson?
I think since the commission lacks the knowledge about drug testing, we leave it to the people that can make those decisions.
Commissioner Glanzer, any further?
No, I'm over it.
Okay, any discussion from the public?
Yeah, quick.
Okay, come on up, Mr. Willis. So the motion on the floor is to take the staff's recommendation with regards to changes of the personnel policy.
Now, on the, on the drug testing part.
Yes, sir.
Now, we, as a driver, we, we are having to take random drug tests all the time.
Okay, yes, sir.
Some of the drivers are on medication that are narcotic. Now, I am on a, on a opioid. I have severe back problems. Is that going to make the employee fired or not?
No, Mr. Mayor, pro tem, if the employee shows a prescription for the, the drugs that they're, that they're taking as per a doctor's prescription, they actually give that, that to the testing facility, and then when they test the, for the drugs, if, if the drugs in that employee's system are at normal limits considering that prescription, it comes back negative, even though, for instance, if there was an opioid that they were testing for and it's within the limits of the prescription.
There is no, there is no limits on it. Either you're on it or not.
Understood, but the, with it, if it's within the prescribed amount of the testing, the testing is that, that.
Not on opioids, no, sir.
Well, I would disagree with it.
You're either on it or you're not. I mean, that's more blank.
Under, I've had a lot of experience in this area.
I have too.
And, and I can tell you that the drug testing, depending on the panels that you have, tests for the sensitivity of the drug that you're prescribed, and it comes back negative, even if you're prescribed certain drugs, that if it's within the limits, then you're, you're okay under the drug testing policy.
Well, I, I have failed. I take mine normal, and I have failed my drug test. So that's the reason I say, yeah, I, I'm on it, I'm up on that, so. I was curious on that. And why do, why does Newberry pay an employee a whole day if he only does a half-day's work? I don't, I don't understand that. I never could get into nothing like that.
Mr. Mayor, pro tem, that's for soured employees who are here tonight. We have a roomful of soured employees that are not making any overtime. By, by the federal wage definition, soured employees make their forty hours whether they work less or more. And in the City of Newberry, as you all know, they, they most every week work more. This was a clarification that it seemed to not be in keeping, that someone would get paid for showing up for less than half a day, so that we made this policy more stringent. If you work for less than half a day, you're going to have to make up the balance of that time through your sick or your vacation. And by virtue of, if you work twelve hours in a day, we don't, we don't have a comp policy. We don't, we don't pay you overtime. It's just the nature of being a soured employee.
All right, I was just, I was curious on that, so.
Absolutely. Dallas, you have anything to add there?
No.
All right. Commissioner Farnsworth?
Since he brought that up, if somebody is taking an opioid and, even though it's prescribed to them, are they still allowed to operate motor vehicles, even though that could affect their judgment? And if something were to happen with us knowing that they are taking that medication, would that not open up a lawsuit towards, towards the City of Newberry?
Mr. Mayor, if, if an employee is prescribed a medication that has restrictions on it, such as you are not allowed to operate heavy machinery, they are compelled to tell us that they are no longer allowed to operate heavy machinery, and the city is required to amend their job duties while they're on that prescription. If an employee fails to tell it to us, and they are in an accident or something, it is immediate, it's a terminable offense. So they are, if you're on something like that, you're, you're supposed to tell your employer so we can make accommodations.
And Dallas, just for clarification, if you're prescribed a medication and there are no restrictions, then the presumption is, is the doctor took into effect that, or the prescriber took in, into consideration that you could still operate that equipment satisfactorily. So, so we would again be absolved of responsibility in case there were some type of error. Is that correct?
Correct. I don't know that's a hundred percent true, but you have any insight on that?
Well, I think the opportunity here is in keeping with the idea of having some flexibility in the policy to get, get it right, instead of having something so black and white, but maybe.
Right. I was, I was just kind of curious as to what kind of ramifications it would have if, if somebody was actually taking a medication of that nature and, or using our machinery and stuff, so.
And, Mr. Mayor, the, the personnel policy still has disciplinary actions. I mean, you can still be suspended for a week, go up to three weeks in fact, but it also, it gives us more options aside from just termination. We can require an employee to enter into a drug assistance program, to submit to random drug tests, to, you know, go to Opioids Anonymous or whatever, to get that employee help if they were taking something they weren't supposed to be.
Fair enough. Well, the motion is on the floor. We have a second. Any further discussion from the dais? Any from you all? Nothing further from the public? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it unanimously. The motion passes, 2019-09. So no further business, we're on to comments. I suppose Commissioner Coleman went to go use the bathroom. It's unavailable. So we'll start at the city manager. Mike, closing comments?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, pro tem. I must say that I appreciate it when personnel policy issues take this much consideration among our, both our citizens and our elected officials. It shows, we say all the time that our human assets are the most important assets that the city has, and I, I think our conversation reflects that. A minute to brag on Newberry and our elected officials. Last Friday, the Jamel Sewell with the, he's the CEO and President of Enterprise Florida, came to Florida. He was speaking through the Gainesville area chamber, and there were probably twenty-five to thirty people in attendance from all walks of life and all business descriptions within the greater Gainesville area. Eight of them, eight of them were from Newberry. No one else was represented by more than two. And so I want to say that I'm, I'm pleased that our elected officials that weren't in attendance were, all contacted me and said they were unavailable. They were out of town or something like that. That's putting your money where your mouth is when Newberry shows up big like that. It was remarkable. Mr. Sewell commented to me about what's going on with Newberry. How did anybody turn out eight people to a Friday after five o'clock event? Many people in attendance noticed the same thing. They were referring to us as the Newberry contingency. So I just wanted to express my gratitude. It's not, y'all go out and do something for the city to staff. It's a, we're going to take the lead and put our money where our mouth is, so thank you. Shout out to our elected officials. As Mayor Pro Tem mentioned, Mayor Marlowe's in DC. He's with former Mayor Conrad. We've got a pair, pair of mayors up there, and they are working on public power. They're advocating for Newberry and public power. They're also advocating very hard for USDA and some changes in FEMA. We, you know, it, we haven't had it as bad, but there are places that are waiting three years to, to get reimbursement from FEMA, and if you got hit really hard, that's just too long to wait. They took a thirteen-foot-long scroll with them that outlines the FEMA process for getting, for, for seeking reimbursement, which we hope has, has really good visual effect. This Wednesday, the city's internal chili cook-off, as a twist, I think that the winner is going to be pushed into a citywide Bring It On community. So I'm looking forward to all the challengers in the community after I win the city's citywide chili contest. And I'll just remind those that, is it last year? Year before, one of those years that, that I brought two chilies in and took first and second. Just saying, just saying. It was in recent memory. The legislative. The State of Florida Legislative Session kicks off officially next week. As you know, we've been gone. They've been doing pre-meetings and committee meetings, but it officially kicks off March fifth and sixth, and we plan to take several trips to Tallahassee to advocate for important projects to Newberry. We've got a top five list. I'm going to begin sending correspondence out so that our pop, top five list is quick to everyone's fingertips about this is what Newberry's asking for. There's a school board meeting for elected officials this Thursday at one-thirty. I think that is on Mayor Pro Tem's list. You'll, you'll be at that, okay, for everyone else to be aware of, and, Mr. Mayor, that concludes my comments.
None, Mr. Walker.
Y'all make me look bad.
As you all know, our qualifying period began today at noon, and it runs through March the seventh. That's Thursday, March the seventh at noon, so if you're interested in qualifying for the office of mayor or Commissioner Group Four or Group Five, please contact, contact me or the city clerk's office, so we can provide you with the necessary paperwork. It can also be found on the city's website. And the election will be held on Tuesday, April the ninth. And the polls will be open from seven to seven. All citizen residents of the City of Newberry will be voting at Precinct Six, and that is the municipal building. So, and my condolences to Judy Womack Lewis Hassan's family. That's all, Mayor.
Let's start from the left. Ms. Glanzer, you go first.
I want to thank all those who came from the community to the opioid reveal, billboard reveal on Thursday. It was so well-attended. I was, I was actually, I was so surprised, and we had Representative Clemens from the Florida Senate com, or House of Representatives, and Commissioner Chestnut from the county, and HPW Chair Reverend Pelham came. And it, some may think it's insignificant to have a big event for a billboard reveal, because the billboard doesn't itself cure anything. But we're hoping that each time somebody passes by it, they'll be aware there is an issue, and where they can go to help, volunteer, fight like crazy to stop this monster called opioid abuse. This morning, our community lost a bright light. Judy Hassan Lewis left this life, but now she walks hand in hand with her Jesus. We will all miss her dearly. She was so beloved, and I will miss her phone calls, because I knew when I saw her name come up on my phone, I was about to get my marching orders, and if I didn't quite march fast enough, she'd be calling, so I need to march faster. And she wouldn't stop calling till that issue was resolved, but she, she worked her whole life with this city to make it better, and I have a list of things she actually did for the city and boards that she was on. I was surprised at the, how much she did. I don't know how she ever accomplished all this, but she was an election deputy from nineteen ninety-nine to two thousand and three. She was the elections clerk from two thousand and four to two thousand and eleven. She was on the cemetery committee from two thousand and five to two thousand and eight. The utility assistant committee for five years, twenty-ten to twenty-fifteen. Citizens Assistant Committee, twenty-fifteen to twenty-seventeen. She was the program director in two thousand for the Eugenia Perkins Foundation. She was the founding member of Concerned Citizens of Newberry, and she was a city employee, City of Newberry employee. city of Newberry employee for four years with the Recreation After School Program, and most importantly for her, I think she was a minister. So we will remember her always and fondly, and we do send our love and, and prayers to her family tonight. And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor, Portem.
Commissioner Farnsworth?
I too wish to express my condolences to the, to Judy's family, and having known her all my life and her, her mom and father and all, they're just, the whole, the whole group of them were just good people, and I've been fortunate to have known them.
Commissioner Hursel?
Just echo my condolences for Judy's family. I always appreciated, when I got the phone call and saw that it was Judy on, on my phone, knowing that it was gonna be a good, useful, and fruitful conversation about, about an issue in town, and so I was happy to be able to have the short amount of time of, of interaction I had with her as a commissioner.
Ditto to that. The highlight between me and Judy was, "Come on, Commissioner Coleman, you never are over here, come on over and see me." So I loved her to death, didn't always see eye to eye, but I had seen her a couple of weeks ago in, in Publix, and she was riding around on that little scooter, and I told her, I said, "Get on up in there, you, you just, you taking advantage of that where I need to be riding on that scooter." And she goes, "Come on, Commissioner Coleman, you can just get on this scooter with me." So, loved her to death, and prayers are out to her family, and she's in a whole lot better place than we are.
I've said it a few times in the past, we have the benefit of standing on the shoulders of people who have come before us, and certainly, I think we'd all agree that one of those sets of shoulders is definitely Judy, so my repeated condolences as well. The city manager, myself, and Brian had the opportunity to host Dr. Gilbert from UFIFIS last Monday. I thought it was a very productive meeting, in our continued effort of doing more with the agritech parks, so I look forward to hopefully seeing some fruit that is born from getting that seed planted. I can't think of any other significant dates that the mayor wanted to pass along, he didn't give any to me, so I'll defer to public comment at this time.
The city manager was supposed to, he promised me he wouldn't forget about me.
My goodness.
City commissioners, Mr. Mayor, as you know, it's budget season, we're a quarter of the way through fiscal year 2019.
It's always budget season.
It's always budget season. Last year, we had four workshops, three of them got rescheduled due to conflicts, so I'm hoping to maybe get that down to only two of them this year. So I have a budget calendar to present to you guys to see if there's anything that needs to be moved, or if we can go ahead and put some budget workshops onto your calendars.
It's still February, right?
Barely. So there's a PowerPoint presentation.
We'll hold up the public for you, Dallas.
Thank you.
Yep.
I appreciate it. Alright, so, the, the PowerPoint is just a calendar version of the page I'm passing out here. The major items start in June. On the calendar, we did try and put all of the various other meetings and conferences and workshops that are going on throughout the summer to help avoid conflicts. Our tentative first date for the budget workshop is June 19th.
What day of the week is that?
That is a Wednesday.
Looking at that, that's a Wednesday.
They should all be Wednesdays, I believe.
He's a savant.
And this first one is scheduled to begin at 5:30.
Dallas, are you anticipating trying to have some one-on-ones with the commissioners ahead of that meeting as usual?
Yes, sir. We, we will do that. Department budgets are due to the manager the first week of May. I anticipate the meetings of the commission either the second or third, fourth weeks of May.
Okay. Okay, carry on.
The second budget workshop, which will be focused on your governmental funds, primarily your general fund, is scheduled for July 10th. The commission will be voting on the preliminary fire assessment rate on the Monday before that date, which is July 8th. That's where you vote on the highest amount that the fire assessment can go. That workshop is scheduled for July 10th at 6:00 PM.
And August?
Yes, I mean, we can move it, this is, you know, if we can move it, we can move it now.
July 10th, the mayor and I will not be...
And I won't be here July 10th, I'll be on...
So there's the two of you plus the mayor on July 10th.
Well, yeah, anytime between...
There's obviously the holiday in there, too.
The first through the 10th, the mayor and I are gonna be gone.
So what about?
The first through the 10th, you and the mayor are gone?
Among other people. He's taking his European trip.
So you're not going? So what about different dates? That we could do the 15th, that, well, Mike and I will most likely be going the 16th through the 18th. We could do the 3rd, or we...
I'll think on the 3rd.
Oh, yeah, yeah, so the...
Twenty-fourth is good.
Yeah.
How about the, what's wrong with 15th?
15th, where, I put charter review on there, I don't know if the charter review board's still gonna be meeting at that point, but, the 15th?
July 15th? Uh, I think should probably be okay for, for me. You're okay?
Wait, I'm sorry, I was looking at August, are you, did you say July 8th?
July 8th is a commission meeting where the commission will be voting on your preliminary fire assessment rate. July 10th is, was the second budget workshop.
Okay, good. It doesn't say that on my list here, it says it in August. Oh, that, I'm sorry. Those months were about to mine, never mind.
So do you have a conflict with the 10th?
I do, I'm about the 3rd to the 13th, 12th.
Okay. And there's two other, so, what about the, he's saying that the 15th would work numeric or sequentially with the other things that are going up. I'm okay on the 15th, are you okay the 15th? You think you're alright?
No, I don't plan that far ahead, but yeah.
You gotta buy tickets.
Uh, let's, let's say the 15th for now.
Okay. My, my only concern with going past the 22nd is the 27th is when the commission votes on your preliminary millage rate. I'd like to have the general fund workshop before then.
Understood.
Alright, moving on to August. In August, we have two workshops scheduled. August the 7th at 6 o'clock is your utility funds workshop.
Okay.
And then August 28th is the final workshop, wrap-up before the budget hearings.
Okay.
No conflicts?
Nothing jumping out at me. Holler if you have a problem.
Alright, and, um, there's nothing in September, and while I've got the calendar up, remember that Memorial Day does fall on a commission meeting night, as a reminder.
Which one, the night?
The May 27th. Yeah, I switched back to, yeah. If we're planning work, meetings, I just wanted to put that, remind everybody.
We, we typically move that Monday's meeting to Tuesday. It's the, it's the commission's discretion on what they wanna do with it, but typically we just move it to the following night.
I just wanted to remind the commission so you can put it on your calendars.
Memorial Day, so 27th. So this one will get moved to the 28th?
We don't have, there's nothing that's good.
Well, that'll come before you for a decision, probably in April.
Okay. You all caught up on your agenda?
Yep, thank you, and we'll send out calendar invites to all the commissioners. Thank you.
Okay, well, again, back to the public.
Yes, you are. Oops, Peggy Loy, citizen. I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
There's been a lot of conflicting information here recently about the county fair at Canterbury. I was under the impression it was for the agricultural part of the fair, but not the carnival part, and now I'm hearing that the whole shebang is going to be there. Is that true?
Fantastic question.
Okay.
Thank you for putting that on the tee. I'll take a stab at it first. The only part of the discussions that I have had, or that we have had probably collectively, is that the county was looking for a new home for the fair. Because it physically didn't fit with the Canterbury property, there was discussions about, there are other places in Newberry that we wanted to offer. We looked at potentially offering the area over on the south side of Easton, or at least helping, because we don't own that property. There were some discussions about, is there a way to incorporate that piece west of Canterbury on the other side of the boulevard? And ultimately, the numbers didn't work to where the county thought that that was a good idea. The only other aspect of it being even remotely or tangentially associated with the Canterbury proper property that I am aware of is the extreme southeast corner, and it took on the flavor of nothing more than what we used to have there as the watermelon festival, and how it was set up for a couple of years when it was out there. I know what the paper reported, there's, yeah, which I think was piggybacking on what the, the Sun reported, and to my knowledge, that that was incorrect. Ms. Baker did send to me an email that said that there was some language in the county's agenda that may have muddied the waters a little bit, and I think maybe the, what was spoken in the meeting was, I don't, not wanna say miscommunication, but maybe had context that was outside the scope of that meeting, and apparently, maybe they were intending to talk to the watermelon festival about it, but that was kind of said in a little bit clunky way. I don't know at this point if they have reached out to the Newberry Watermelon Festival, the last thing I knew, they had not. Kathy Thomas posted on her Facebook that she had not had any comments with the county about that. So, fast forward to today, my interpretation is, A, the county has ceased connection to the person who was originally the person who put on the fair. The names are similar, but they are actually two different entities, so I can't imagine that that person is going to put on the fair at the Canterbury site, which would be county property at that point. So that's an incongruency. The fact that it doesn't physically fit there is an incongruency. I would also submit of my own accord that the economics of having a county fair in a town of 6,000 people versus one over in the, in the city, should some person decide to step up and put on a fair of their own accord, don't necessarily work out to bring it out to the county fair. So as far as I'm concerned, and everybody else can have their opinion, feel free, it is a, it is DOA.
Not even the agricultural part.
Though, the agricultural fair was still intended, and still is intended, to be put at Canterbury. In fact, Ms. Lee Room was here a couple of minutes ago and spoke to some of the investments that they're anticipating putting in over at the fair, and I know that there is an ongoing discussion with the staff over there and with Mr. Weisman. Projected closing was August, August. I'll go down the line, if you have anything else you wanna add in.
Carnival, I think, is what they're talking about, which is not the fair.
Yeah, there is definitely an issue here with, because it's called the Alachua County Fair, it sounds like it's put on by the county. Those, that is totally separate. I will apologize if I've kinda used the words interchangeably between county fair and/or carnival interchangeably. If that's my fault, I apologize, but, I mean, at this point, we are where we are, I'm not sure how to unwind or convince other, convince people otherwise. I know that Newberry Oaks Forum had a big comment about it, I think those questions have all been answered, but I got kicked off the forum from the administrator because I wasn't living there anymore, and probably some other reason, but whatever, I can handle it. But am I missing anything, or is there anything else that you wanna add?
Mr. Mayor, Portem, I, I think everything you said is accurate. I believe that the county staff are interested in communicating with the watermelon festival folks about using the watermelon festival and any type of carnival that, that it occasionally associates with as its substitute for the Alachua County Fair. So the way I understood it is, is those people that like fairs, county fairs, and, and those small carnivals, they can get their fix at the watermelon festival at our facility, but that is, that's something the county staff isn't interested in, and I believe they have a meeting, or they're working on setting a meeting with the watermelon festival folks. And, and I think that, as you stated, county has disassociated with the Alachua County Fair, but, and I think that the major impetus, it's not that the county doesn't intend to allow the occasional 10-acre size carnival like what we have at the watermelon festival on that campus, but the, the county recognizes that having an 80-acre or 100-acre county fair with carnival, which is what they've had in eastern Gainesville for all these years, wouldn't fit on a 38-acre campus.
Understood. Under no obligation, but if you feel like you wanna jump in for any reason, Cherokee and I, is Commissioner Farnsworth?
I'll just say, you know, after all these years, I always thought that the, the Alachua County Fair and the, and the Alachua County Commission were tied together, but they're, they're not. They're totally two separate entities, just kinda like we say Newberry Watermelon Festival, but they're not part of this board. They're two different entities, so, and since the county has totally disassociated themselves with them, I think it'd be up to the, to the Alachua County Fair itself to make any kind of gesture to, to come to, to city of Newberry and partner with, with the Newberry Watermelon Festival if they so decide, so, and I don't really see that happening, but maybe Ms. Woodcock can have a, a comment regarding it.
I hate to speak for, Linda Woodcock, I hate to speak for the Watermelon Festival Committee.
Is the microphone on, Amy?
Yeah, seems to be, thank you. I don't wanna speak for the Watermelon Festival Committee as such. First of all, there's only about six committee members, and we're not about to put on a fair, or a carnival, or run the county fair, or the youth fair, that's all, I don't know how, how this all happened. It's just like, we woke up one morning, and whoa, it was pretty scary, it really was. The plan for the Newberry Watermelon Festival, Inc., is a private company entity, I don't know how to say it, I'm probably not saying the correct term, but we're private. We're not a part of the city of Newberry, we're not a part of the county, we're not a part of Easton. We're not. We, we run the thing, you know, it's a private thing, it's incorporated. So that's one thing. We've been, kinda had to move around a lot because of different, for different reasons. So we went out to the town center a couple of years ago, that's been very successful. The people who own the town center have been very welcoming. At this point, today, tonight, right now, as far as I know, there's no plan to change to go to the county fairgrounds or anywhere else, we're gonna stay at the town center. We're gonna stay at the town center as of this moment.
Thank you, ma'am.
So, how all of this got started, I don't know.
Thank you, ma'am. Sounds good.
Everybody clear?
Clear.
Good. Okay.
Last two commissioners, you actually live in the Oaks Forum, maybe, or Newberry Oaks, maybe you're on the forum and no?
Yeah, I, you know, I think it, I'll wait for, I, I think it, it, we can attribute to an overzealous reporter not understanding the context of a conversation at the Alachua County Commission meeting, and then replicated bad information, and then the next day, the Gainesville Sun still didn't understand what they were talking about and wrote another article that was, was less than misleading, or more than misleading. And I think the other disservice we always do is we don't start this conversation using the correct terms. The Alachua County Youth Livestock Fair is going to be held at the, what we call Canterbury, what the county is now calling the Alachua County Agricultural Exposition Center, and I didn't even get that. So, to me, words matter, and we aren't, we aren't using or engaging with the correct terminology to make it clear to everybody. The youth livestock fair is coming to Newberry. The carnival, at this point, the county is just, has parted ways with that entity and is, is probably not interested in, in enjoining with them again. Nor have they reached out to anybody in Newberry about enjoining with them.
Any further comments? Hearing none, we are adjourned.